Six eighteen P M. Town Councilman, Town Council Chambers, eleven seventy Main Street. I apologize for the late start. Jay, we lead us in prayer.
West Warwick, we ask for the wisdom to make good decisions, to speak with confidence and listen with compassion, and to work together to create a better of life, way of life for the people of this town. Amen.
Jay, who's in the budget league?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yeah, it wasn't a mara- it wasn't a marathon this.
And I never realized it.
Roll call, Councilman Dennison.
Here.
Councilman Luchardi.
Here.
Councilman Messier.
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson.
Here.
Council President Goslin.
Here.
Forum is declared. Consent agenda, approval of the minutes of the July ninth, July thirtieth, town council meetings and cancellation of taxes in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars in one.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Who's second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Ordinances, second reading of an ordinance for an affordable housing agreement and covenant for Lipit Mill and Marathon Development LLC.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Al?
Is the affordable housing one?
Yes.
That came before planning for recommendation. Planning sent you unfavorable recommendation.
No problem.
No, not that one.
This is for Lipit Mill.
Oh, Lipit Mills, not me.
Okay, Lipit Mills, not Al. So Lipit Mill would be Sal and uh tax agreement that came before our last meeting. Nothing's changed on that, so it's.
I still have some questions about the numbers. I have to be honest with you. And you and I did some math.
You have some basic math.
Yeah.
It's kind of interesting.
Just.
Napkin math.
It was napkin math, just trying to understand exactly what the town receives, and I don't know if you've had further conversation with them, ten.
The issue is in play. So, I mean, I think it appeases what the applicant wanted as far as their financing people because it's moving along. Um, you'd be well within your right to table tonight to have a second meeting because we've already had one meeting with the group. Uh, obviously, you can't exceed three members of the council at the meeting, so I mean, if two of you wanted to attend.
Does anybody get from that development?
That was kind of surprising to me.
So as far as getting clarity on the, uh, the tax dollars both now during the construction phase and after the construction phase, I mean, you're not.
And I may be wrong, but I think when we looked at it, based on the number of units, once it was fully up and running, we'd be getting less money than during the development phase, and that just didn't make sense to me.
Like I said, they, they gave a timeframe. They needed to get basically everything done by the time by the end of September. So since you're only in August and it's only be twenty days after the second reading, so even if you put this on the first calendar, council meeting in September, that still gives them enough time based upon their own timeline. So you do have the right to table it to get more information, or you can act on it tonight.
Again, I'm just throwing that out as, as I did the math. And I think I brought that up to the gentleman as to because it would going to be based on rent.
Right, dollar amounts didn't match up.
No, it didn't. Um, I think they're talking about a forty-three or forty-five thousand dollar payment now, which I appreciate, and we've got nothing. But, but I think it, I think when you do the math, if, if they, if the apartments at our thousand dollars apiece per month in that ballpark, we wind up with less than that when it's. Yeah, so something, something is, it cleans it up. It does a lot of good things there. I, I, I'm, I'm not against it, but I just want to understand what, what financial deal we're making.
I think in the last meeting, you asked a question um about after that first payment and before they're completed. Are we going to see a reduction? You know, in other words, we didn't want to see less than that original payment until it was completed, and then the, the rents would take over, right?
But even when the rents take over, I think it's less than that payment. And that's, I just want to make that, that point, and, and I'm not sure if that's true. I think the gentleman that spoke maybe was the attorney said, oh, well, that's not true. That's not how it will be calculated, but I, I need a math, math for dummies to help me out as far as that goes.
Given it forty-eight? Um, with the rent? That was forty-eight per year.
No, that's what it is without the rents, and I think with the rents, it goes down below that.
Yeah, before we make a decision, they need to clarify, because once you make the decision, we're stopped.
Just so we know.
So.
Just so we know what the numbers are, and maybe Sal does know that.
Well, I know some of the discussion also was the price that they're paying for the building too. Um, you know, we, we have talked to numerous people to try to take over that project, and this, this individual did think out of bankruptcy about over three and a half million dollars too, so I think that was part of the discussion also, so.
It's, it's not just their rent. It, you, the subsidy that they would get from the government to make up for the rent counts also.
So I think we, if somebody could just tell us what that formula is, I think that would help. I know, and I know you, you can't right now, and I think you asked that question.
One of the questions was, you know, what did you estimate the average rent to be, and they weren't even clear on that because the numbers changed. They wanted four percent of, um, let's see. Basically, he was taking the forty-three thousand dollars in rent taxes, dividing it by four percent, coming up with one million seven hundred, seventy-five thousand dollars divided by sixty-five units, it came to sixteen thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars that you were going to get, based upon the math that he gave you. So again, if you're apprehensive about the dollar amounts, my suggestion would be is to um table this. You certainly have time. You can have a special meeting on it, but uh unless you're, you know, if the majority of you are happy with the numbers and the way it was explained.
So what did you just say? So it's not just someone pays a thousand dollars. Suppose we have one unit there. It's not that, it's that plus what?
Plus the subsidy that they get from the federal government.
Which they would report every year to, so.
Which has to be in the report that comes to me to figure out.
So I would just feel more comfortable in knowing what that calculation is, so we understand that. I don't know if they've shared that with you? No.
There's a number that they can charge, that, that is the going rate for the apartment.
Yes.
How much they can charge the low to moderate income person coming in.
Correct.
And they, and they might also limit the rent that they pay. Sometimes they do both. Sometimes they do one. Sometimes they just limit the rent. Sometimes they just limit the income. Sometimes it's a combination of the both.
We're voting on it sometime.
So I, I just want to, I would prefer if they, and I don't know if Mark or.
Because they are looking for.
I think they're willing to meet and to discuss, to go everything, but one, one of the questions I think that the council was having trouble with the last time is that how do they come up, or bottom line is, what is the average rent going to be for a single bedroom? What's the average rent going to be for two bedroom? And if there are any three bedrooms, what's the rent going to be? And then what's the dollar amount going to be from the commercial or non-residential uh pot of the uh project? So there are questions. Does that would count also?
Yes, it does, and that, there's no break given on that, but Sal, what Sal's saying there is that it's not just the rent, it's something more than the rent.
Right.
So I.
So those are the questions you should ask.
Formula is and, and what, what we would wind up bringing in, just so we know. I mean, certainly you would want to know that going forward too.
If it was a thousand dollars a month, and you do the math, we would be getting like thirty-one thousand dollars. At four percent, eight percent would be sixty-two.
Right.
But if it was eight percent, they wouldn't even be in front of you. They would just.
And, and I understand that, and they're willing to give us forty-five or forty-eight or whatever they said so right now, but then.
Why should we be taking less?
That's, that's all I'm trying to understand.
With, with this though, so right now, you're taxing the units. How about the land? Does that get taxed?
Yes.
Is that built into that three, four percent, or is that a separate land?
Like when, when they.
Building and land is on my.
When they go that way, that all goes by the wayside and it's strictly on the income from the property.
Yeah. So I, I don't want to, and I don't know if I have in my notes when their deadline was. I know that they, they said they wanted to be up and running next summer. Yeah.
First meeting's the third, right? We have a meeting on the, the third?
Yes.
Yeah.
They said next summer was, was twenty units or.
They'd like to be up, yeah, they'd be up and running with.
September thirtieth was the date to be.
So.
To close and transfer title.
So September third is the meeting, so their twenty days is not an issue. I, I would, I would prefer, I would, I would feel more comfortable in tabling this and asking for some more information and putting it on the third, but I don't want to, I mean, I want to know what you guys think.
In addition, if that's the way the council's going to go, I would suggest that you have a meeting with the decision makers from Marathon and have at least two members of the council there to enter or ask any questions and get answers.
That's fine.
So I'll make a motion to table this item for this evening?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
And again, not against the project. I'm happy that it's going to be cleaned up. I just want to understand what the finances are.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten, amending chapter ten, section fifty-four, mobile food establishments.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Al?
This here on second reading. Uh, last, last time we brought it before you. Uh, I, I want to put in, put in the definition in the ordinance is state statutory definition of a mobile food truck establishment. Uh, I added a, I changed it from a thousand feet to five hundred foot separation from a restaurant, and it applies during the hours with such food serving establishment, a restaurant is open for business. That was a comment you made about uh they closed on Sunday. Why, why prohibit the truck from being there? And the other thing was I changed the hours of operation from seven A M. to eleven P M.
Those were based on our discussions last time. Yes.
So Al, if, that means if you have a, if you're down at River Point and you have baseball, softball, summer basketball going on, and one of the stands is selling ice cream, that means an ice cream truck can't be down.
Established restaurant.
So concession stand wouldn't.
No.
How would that limit, that limit the leagues?
There is something already in place for that, isn't there? When you permit the league.
I don't know. Well, the, the.
I know the league's through numerous trucks out, except for Kona Ice. I remember Kona Ice used to give ten percent of their sales to the league.
I, I feel.
Good at providing, um, good at providing Italian ice, Kona Ice or so.
Yeah.
That won't matter, but if you're doing.
It's a good question.
Because you don't want to hurt, because, I mean, that's where the leagues make their money, so.
I feel comfortable if the ordinance is directed to uh Mike's Wieners, you know, that type of an established, that you don't want to bring somebody in for a day operating across the street, you know, next to all the established business in town.
And the other thing that was brought up over the past two weeks, which I, I apologize, Al, I should have called and asked you, was for instance, we have two parades here a year. One's Labor Day and one's St. Patrick's Day. Food trucks have already asked about parking on the roads during Labor Day outside of the zones, like.
I would say that's a police matter.
Is that a police matter, or if they, if they get a permit, are they eligible and able to do so? That's the question that I have is. So an individual reached out to me, says, I, I want to set up a food truck during Labor Day. I said, well, what do you think you're going to set up? And he goes, well, I'm thinking about going on somebody's property that's willing to let me put my truck there. I was like, I don't know, I have to ask the question.
I wouldn't have any problem. I was private profit. If I want to let you park on my property and the council's giving you the opera, uh, opportunity to be there for Labor Day, I don't see any problem with that.
Well, I mean, yeah, as long as it doesn't conflict with the other rule of them being within the five. Within a five hundred feet, depending on the business, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, I mean.
Depends where they are. I mean, there's a lot of, obviously, if it's down in, you know, where the Holy Ghost is, you're kind of near a lot of restaurants, but up this way, you might not be, depending, depending where you are, right?
Again, Al just said something that strikes a nerve. It has to be an established restaurant. So two stands at the Holy Ghost are not established restaurants three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It's one weekend a year, so I ju, I don't want no headaches come.
But I, I think this, I think that, I think that situation is similar to you have a row of food trucks all next to one another. I mean, I think that's uh, I don't know, on Friday night, I understand.
But I mean, down, if you're down near the Holy Ghost, there's no parking signs on a, a wide range of that area, right? So where would they even be able to park?
Somebody's property.
You're on somebody's driver, you're right, yeah.
I, I think that if you're, if you're coming in with a mobile ice cream, you're on the same boat as the mobile food, as the food truck, and you know, that, that kind of competition, I don't think you could do, you got a free sample, you'd be, end up saying that no, the food trucks have to be five hundred feet apart.
No, that, that's not what I'm looking for. What I'm saying is the two parades that we have.
Yes.
How do we, so for instance, I think Casa Tiroza, the Holy Ghost, every club probably sells their own sandwiches or whatever.
Diggies is over there.
Well, Diggies is Diggies. That's established. That's established restaurant. So with that being said, can somebody sit there and park across the street from Citizens Club in a driveway with the Caserole truck?
Well, I think that.
Because they're not an established restaurant.
I understand, I understand what you're, what you're saying, but I don't think that the, the people selling sandwiches for the church are any different than the food truck. I mean, I think that uh, you know, I don't, I don't, as I said, I don't, I'm putting two food trucks next to one another. They're in competition. I, I.
Gray, I feel like it's a gray area.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't think.
But you're not wrong.
I, because then you're getting to pick and choose. Well, they're selling sandwiches for the church, but I'm selling sandwiches for my pocket.
No, but I'm, but then what happens?
It's only once a year.
But then what happens when somebody calls the police department on Labor Day weekend?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be a test, it'll be a test run, yeah.
Yeah. I just, in three weeks, we'll see a test run.
I just write them, you worry about.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Al. Um, any public comment on this ordinance? Anything from the council? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay? Jay, Jason?
Yeah. Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve, amending the zoning map of the town of West Warwick and amending section five point three, table of uses and five point one zero, sign section. Two definitions of the zoning code.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Back on to this is back in two thousand, the council passed a ordinance creating a uh, a piece of village commercial zone. In the ordinance, it says that the purpose was quote, "to respect small town scale and proportions, maintain a close relationship to the street to endure the continuity of the townscape, encourage the mixing, mixing of different uses, both stacked and proximate, provide minimum intrusive for minimum, minimum intrusiveness from parking, and provide a variety of attractive and accessible public spaces for the Arctic Village." Nowhere could I find what they actually considered the Arctic Village. They put it out there. So that was there, and then along comes, I don't know the year, that the Arctic Village got created into the Arctic Design Control District, which whatever the Arctic Village was before and Village Commercial, now it's Arctic Design Control. That was there for a while, and then we put on top of that the Arctic Redevelopment District. So this whole thing of, I called Sal to find out. I had never had anything in my twenty years' experience with planning or zoning regarding this village commercial. Sal did some research. We found two lots in the entire town. Up at the end, uh, up on Washington Street, where Nolan Street goes off. There is a rental house on the corner, on the, it's be the southern side of Nolan, and next to it are private residence. This, the southerly side across Nolan Street and across Washington Street is all Arctic redevelop, uh, redevelopment. Surrounding these two houses is business. You got these two houses that are the only village commercial in the town of West Warwick. I spoke with Jason and I wrote to the owners, the property. The owner of the rent, rental unit called me, wanted to know what was going on. I explained it to him, and his attitude was, no, I'm, I'm more proper in a business zone than I am in this village commercial. The other um, the privately owned, um, I'm guessing they're like me, they're elderly, and they uh had their son call me, and he was, I spoke with him and them. I sent them all letters. They called me back. And I explained what was going on, and they said, no, they, they made sense to them. So, oh, by the way, you did get a favorable recommendation on this from the planning board. So my attitude is, it's been twenty years. I have never seen one thing regarding village commercial. Number two, we only have two lots in the entire town. So my proposal is to change those two lots to a business, uh, a business zone that's just like the ones surrounding them. Remove that village commercial right out of our zoning code because it, you know, it means nothing. And then the one other uh addition to it is in the, in somewhere in the ordinance that if you own a place in the village commercial and the people before you had a hole in the sidewalk, you can put your flag in that same hole, so that's removed. But uh, I think it's, it's a situation where we should clear, clear up to get rid of it.
So, so Al, for the record, there's no planned businesses going in those two lots?
No, there's, one is a residential. I spoke with the son and the um, and the parents, and the other's already a rental operation.
So this is just cleaning up, doing some cleanup to get rid of something that is not used.
You know, I, I don't, I don't think it even exists.
So Al, the, the adjoining lots on Nolan Street um, that run down the same side as the, as the residential lot, what are those zoned out?
Business.
Uh, a joint. Nolan Street is here to the, facing Nolan Street, all the lots to the left on Nolan Street, and all the lots behind them going up Washington Street, uh, business.
Okay, makes sense.
Makes sense.
It's just two lots in this whole business zone. Makes sense to me.
Leave the meat and the sandwich, Mason. Any public comment on this? Any other comment from the council? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
First reading of twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, amending section two, general purposes, section three definitions, section four division into districts, section five use regulations, and section eighteen, power of the town council to establish zoning board review and adopt zoning ordinances of the town of West Warwick zoning code.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
This is the one that the planning board uh, gave, gave a unfavorable recommendation. I explained to them that whether the council passes it or not, it doesn't matter because it's state law. So they, they also, yes, they knew that, but they wanted the voice, let it be known that they are opposed, as I've said for myself many times, to the one-size-fits-all legislation, and they're feeling particularly about what the legislation for the accessory dwelling units, the way it's being presented will do to a town as popular, populated as West Warwick. Uh, I don't know, I told, I know I've told some of you, that some time ago, when the Providence Journal uh, put in the paper the populations of the various towns and cities. Out of curiosity, I looked up the West Warwick and the surrounding communities, got their square, square mileage, broke it down to acres. In the town of West Warwick, we have six point one people, six point one five people on every piece of acre of land. Town of West Greenwich has point one two people. You've got less than a person per acre, and six plus here, and they got one piece of legislation that fits us all. So that was where the planning board was upset. Problem is that a couple of the points with this A D U uh, in certain instances, they, they're by right. They only need a building permit. And uh, it provides for complete, this is the definition, an A D U provides complete independent living facilities for one or more persons. It may take various forms, including, but not limited to, a detached unit. That means you can put something in your backyard. A unit that is part of an accessory structure, such as a detached garage. A unit that is part, part of an expanded or remodeled primary, primary dwelling. It always had been, it had to be attached to the primary dwelling. Now you can have an accessory unit out in your garage. Uh, the, the restrictions to one accessory dwelling by right and owner occupied property as a reasonable accommodation for family members with disabilities on a lot with a total area of twenty thousand square feet or more with the primary use is residential, where the proposed A D R is located within the existing foot, footprint of the primary structure or existing accessory attached dwelling structure and does not expand it. They define a, an individual household as a person or group of persons living together. The maximum number shall not be less than one, nor more than five unrelated persons per dwelling. So as I read this, you go to two car garage, turn it into apartment, and you can put five people in there by right. So that was, that was the gist of the plan, uh, the planning boards wanting to tell you that they're not in favor, they're not in favor of it because of my, what I have to say to you is whether you're in favor of it, not in favor, it's not going to matter because by, by adopting this tonight, our zoning code becomes the same as the state law. By not adopting this tonight, if I'm sitting with the, I'm, if I'm sitting with the planning board and somebody comes in and uh, meets these standards, I got to say to the planning board, forget what the zoning code says, the state law says this, and you got to do it. So you, this is one that unfortunately, I don't think you have much choice.
So I think what I hear you saying is that state law is the law of the land, and anybody that comes in, even though our ordinance may not mirror them as soon as they go to court as an expense to us, they will win.
They will.
Okay.
So Al, I'm going to admit that this one, I read through it a few times, and I get lost halfway through because it just, it's just words. Um, but one of the things that sticks out to me is what you just said a minute ago about the twenty thousand square foot lot, so that is a minimum.
That's an or though.
It, the twenty, if, if I've got twenty thousand square feet, I get to buy accessory dwelling in my backyard by right.
Right.
I go upstairs and say, hey, Bob, give me a building permit.
But that's an or, so it's an owner occupied with a reasonable accommodation for family members with disabilities or twenty thousand square foot more lot, which, or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are all.
Yeah.
Different things they can do, but if.
So if we were to deny that upstairs, somebody came in with a twenty thousand square foot lot, and he said, no, they go to court, we have, they're going to be able to do it, yeah.
That, you know, I, I think the way it's written, and I think, Mark, a lot of this language is going to get interpreted.
And I'm sure there'll be some massaging of it as, as we go along.
I, I'm, I'm giving you the way I look at it, that I will be advising our boards, that I've read it, and that's, this is my interpretation of, and I, you know, a number of others that I've spoken to in this same capacity that I am, and we all seem to agree that all was done that way.
Does this address, forgive it if it's a dumb question, but does this address any kind of parking situations, things like that?
One per bed.
One per bedroom?
That you could have five people in.
Right.
You cannot have more than one.
Wait.
So if you can't support the one spot.
So if you don't have the parking spot, then you can't do it?
So if you don't have the parking spot, then you can't do it?
No, you need one, only one spot.
If you're doing this, we can only, we cannot mandate more than one per bedroom.
Per bed.
I'm pretty sure it's.
But some of these places, especially in, I know in my ward, there's places they don't have like any parking. So they wouldn't be allowed to if they don't have any parking?
No, 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 what it says is if you're coming in to put an accessory dwelling in, we can't say to you. You got three people living there, we want three parking spaces. You're gonna have five people who are a family unit, we can only see, we can only mandate one.
Correct, but some of, there's definitely some places in my ward that have zero parking spots, which are obviously grandfathered in from before. So you're saying if some of these places want to build an accessory dwelling unit, but they have zero parking, then we do have.
We can mandate one, we can't mandate.
But if they have zero, then we can, that's the only, that's one of the reasons we would be able to turn it down then in those situations?
Yes, because the order, the, the.
And the parking isn't just on street, it's like a specific off street park. Okay, I'm just saying, because there are definitely places in this town.
When they, when they came in for their, whatever the application, whatever type it might be.
Okay.
They, we can say to them, if you don't have one, we're not going to approve it.
So.
But we can't say to them, you have to have two.
I, I don't want to get too deep into the weeds with specific situations, but to help me better understand this. There's a particular property in my ward, which is for sale or not for sale yet, but it will be. But the, the other consideration for the owner, as I'm being told by the neighbors, is that he'll keep it, rent it out and then build an ADU in the back. We don't feel, we, the neighbors, because there isn't much room on the either side of house, of the house, that they have enough room to put a driveway to get to the back. And there's only room for two spots in the front, in a driveway, in a three bedroom house already. So is that something that could prevent somebody from doing something like this? If they cannot manufacture another parking space or access to that unit, if it's in the back.
Can they decrease the front yard is the question.
No, but in this particular case, I mean, with money, you can do anything, right? But that would be a huge expense, the way this thing is set up.
In all honesty, I have not met with Bob Asson. And figured out how we're going to set up the regulations until this is in effect.
Right.
But that's a question that, in, in your situation, uh, I would, I would, my suggestion would be. That our rule would, would be, you've got two there now and you've got two bedrooms that are there. So that takes care of that. If you're going to add another bedroom, you're going to add another parking space. Whether that, I, I don't know whether it exists today in Bob's office. But once this is in place, that's the kind, I'm going to have to sit down with Bob and go through this because this is going to be totally new to him. Because people can go to him without going to zoning or planning and saying, we've got a right to do this. All right, so, so, as many.
It's gonna be a mess.
It's simple. When you build a single family house, they don't tell me to create. I mean, I, I did it twelve years ago. They didn't, it's three bedroom, but they didn't tell me to have three parking spots. I had to have a two, I put a two car garage in.
Yeah, but.
It doesn't, doesn't require me, now I got six cars in my driveway.
We, we, we're talking about.
Had to extend my driveway, but.
We're, we're talking about. I'm going to add an ADU. What the, what the, what the legislature, as I am guessing this said, that we could, we could prevent that ADU. By saying you're going to have five spots or you're going to have three spots. To, because we don't want this ADU built. So the legislature says to us, we're not going to let you require more than one. They're not saying we have to require one. We want to let them come in without any, we could do that. But all they're saying to us is they're giving us the ability to, to have one. But they're not giving us the ability to prevent the ADU by requiring more than one. It's, it's a, it's another, my, it's another saying to.
I understand that out, but also, and if I remember correctly, there's a percentage of land that has to stay grass area.
Oh, you, you're getting into another area.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is if, if you're going to create, like I just said. Somebody put a two, two car driveway when they built their house, now they're putting accessory dwelling, well, I'm going to take out more landscaping and put more driveway in.
The idea is not to change the footprint of the residential, uh, lot.
In that situation, according to Mark's place, they come in and they say, okay. We said to them, you have to have one parking space.
It doesn't say where though, and, and that's what I'm saying, like.
No, no, the, the, doesn't say where, but when he says, okay, I'm going to put right over there on the boundary, no, you can't put it.
It's a ten foot boundary.
Yeah, so it has to be within whatever areas it would properly fit. I mean, uh, it's, it's got, it's got to be within the setbacks and all the rules we presently have in place. It can't, it can't block, we have a, we have an ordinance.
That's what I'm saying. What I'm trying to say is there is no, not everybody's cut in stone that they can just make an accessory dwelling in their backyard. Because they have to follow the percentage of land use, the percentage of asphalt or cement. They have to follow the boundary lines, so it's.
And we can say to them, and you have to have one drive, one, one car driveway. So that you're, so you want, you want to put a place in and you've got no place to put it. We can say to you, you've got to put one in, we want your car off the street. And if you don't have a place for your driveway, we don't have to approve it.
And the driveway doesn't have to go to the shed first, so whatever they're building back there.
No.
But they can walk from wherever they park, right?
What's the stop? All right, you have a house now with two cars and a two car driveway. You build the accessory dwelling. You take one of the two existing cars and you park on the street, like everybody in the town does.
No.
And then that other car, they put a space in that driveway for that other.
No, we're saying to you, you're coming in to build an accessory dwelling unit. There are two existing parking spaces. We want you to have a parking space for that accessory dwelling unit. You don't get to use those, those are already there. We want one for your accessory dwelling specified, so you're going to come in with your third one. The driveway, as I read this, we can demand that for the accessory dwelling, you have to have a driveway for that dwelling.
So what if there's a three bed house that wants to add one, but they've got parking galore? They can fit 10 cars. Can we still demand that they make an 11th spot?
No, because they would have the.
Okay.
The, the, I mean, it's going to be, it's again, you're getting my opinion of something as a.
Right.
You know, if you go to two bedroom house and you've got two parking spaces, we can say for that accessory dwelling, we want another one. If you go to two bedroom house and as you say, you've got five parking spaces as well. There's two there and one.
I suspect over time, there will be some redefining of what the rules are and how things they work. Yes.
They shall be established. If, if people try to take advantage of it to the, to the nth degree, they'll be case lower for you, you know? Because the whole idea wasn't to change the footprint of yard versus, you know, cement. Because most people then could cement their entire front yard and come up with all sorts of different parking. But it's going to take a little bit of time and they know that they, right now. As the general assembly normally does, they put things into play and then see how it works out and then changes are made afterwards.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the council? Any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay? Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, amending chapter 11, motor vehicles and traffic, article two, operation. And adding section fifty-two, low speed vehicles.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Second, Al.
It is passed, uh, like, uh, legis, they passed an operation for low speed vehicles on state roads. There's a definition, I mean, that gives you the authority to, uh, Colonel Green and, uh, the safety committee. Looked at it and they came up with, uh, six streets. Green Bush Road, New London Avenue, New London Turnpike, Wakefield Street, Fairview Avenue and East Greenwich Avenue. Which they feel would be unsafe to have these low speed vehicles, um, on, on the highway. I would, um, I would suggest that maybe. Picking the choice of streets, I mean, I'm just, they're the ones who know, the traffic committee that, and I think, I think you all know that would be a. These are not golf carts. These are vehicles that, uh. Four wheel motor vehicle that is exclusively electric powered, has a gross vehicle weight rating less than three thousand pounds. A top speed of not greater than twenty miles an hour, but of greater than twenty miles an hour, but less than twenty-five and does not include golf carts. And that's whatever they are, and I think that.
So one of my questions, I know when I first read this and I saw it from the previous major was, is a lot of elderly right now driving their mobile scooters around town. Does that prevent them from doing so? Because that's their only way of getting around town.
I don't think.
They do it safely. Unfortunately, I haven't heard of any accidents on a mobile scooter, but.
From, from the definition. Four wheeled motor vehicle. I don't know whether that would.
Well, that, and again, I, this is, this is the question. My neighbor has a scooter that stands on and I could tell you he does forty miles an hour. And he could do forty miles an hour. He wears a helmet. I find that more unsafe, especially if you hit that pothole than you do that.
Yeah, but the, the legislation didn't give you a power to regulate.
I, I understand, but I just don't, what I, what I don't want to see tomorrow is, you know, there's a gentleman who drives a red one around all of West Walk here. I don't want to see him getting pulled over and getting a ticket.
You're going to be on the news, Ernie.
I, that's, that's my only concern, um, and, and I'll be honest. Even my father in his final months, he was driving one of them around town. He'd go to Cumberland Farms and back and do whatever. That was his only way. It was safer for him to get there and then in his truck and drive around town.
All, all of those, um, specific examples you just gave are, are not applicable. This law does not apply to them. They have to be four wheel drive, they have to be all electric. They have to have speeds exactly twenty-one to twenty-five miles per hour. So there's going to be some, some piece of equipment on those vehicles that you spoke about, they're going to preclude them from this law. They also have to be registered, insured and inspected. So none of those vehicles would apply for that because they, they don't have, they don't have directional signals, they don't have brake lights, they don't have headlights. So those, those motorized scooters and, and, um, you know, carts, uh, that you're referring to are not applicable with, under this law.
Well, some of those mobility scooters, they have blinkers, headlights, everything now, so.
Yeah, but even, I mean, he has golf carts were excluded too, so.
Yes, correct.
Could, uh, could we add one? I'm looking at the list. Well, I'm looking at the list here and these are all cut through streets. Um. We drive on all of these. The one I'd like to add is Pulaski Street. Even though it has a stop sign. When you go from the Coventry area into West Walk, around that corner. Um, that is a cut through to West Walk and back into Coventry. I feel it'd be beneficial to add that to that list.
We can add anything if you want to the list. It, the issue with Pulaski Street is they can't drive on Main Street. So even if they come down Main Street, they can't go onto Main Street.
Okay.
Well, but from the, is it still considered Coventry when they're coming from the other way though? It's still Coventry.
Yeah.
Right, when you get away, yeah.
We can certainly add it.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to. I feel more comfortable.
These were all come, come up with my, uh, you know, with, with the traffic safety committee, um, you know, with speaking. The, the issue really becomes, there's probably thirty streets that I want. But I'm trying to be reasonable because, you know, i- if we, if we just, we can't prevent them in town. We know that. I don't want them in town. I, I, I think they're, they're patently unsafe with the other vehicles that are on our roads. Our roads are too congested for that. They're great for, you know, maybe a retirement community in Florida, fantastic. Our roads are too congested, too heavily traveled and there's large vehicles on the road, in my personal opinion, my professional opinion. Um, so we, we tried to limit it to the roads that are heavily traveled, maybe excessive speed periodically on those roads. Maybe some heavyweight vehicles on those roads. Um, we can certainly add any streets that the council wants to add to them.
I'm glad you're saying that because Kowisa comes to mind, Main Street, Factory Street, all these.
We had a whole bunch as we started off with.
Yeah. Obviously, this is another situation where state law is going to take precedence.
They have to register.
Yes.
They have to insure them.
Yes.
They're doing the speed limit. A UGO is probably the same size. But they can't drive on the road.
Just.
So what's the sense of.
You goes on electric.
Look at some of the cars that are electric that are tiny. I mean, I'm just pointing out, like I, I know you don't want them there and I. So I understand, but if you can do the speed limit, follow the safety.
No, these ones can't do the speed limit because they have to be between twenty and twenty-five, right?
Well, it says twenty-one to twenty-five, so they can do the speed limit. The, the issue is going to become that they're small vehicles. They don't weigh much. It's, it, and, and they're underpowered, meaning if they take off, if they try to jet out into traffic before a big truck's coming. And the truck decides, well, you're not going to come out.
It's one of the roads you picked, the thirty, thirty-five, right?
You know, and let's face it, uh, I don't know, I don't know if you know this, but people don't generally obey the speed limit all the time in West Walk. So, I mean, we, we like the fact that, you know, maybe, you know, New London Avenue is twenty-five miles an hour. If somebody happens to be going thirty, thirty-two, thirty-five miles an hour and there is a collision. I think the, the likelihood for serious, uh, property damage and injury and or fatalities is greatly increased with a smaller vehicle. They weigh less, they have less protection. Yeah, they have blinkers and they have headlights and they have other safety features, but they're certainly not going to fare well against a full sized vehicle.
Right, there's no airbags, there's no.
So I mean, I, I'm, you know, I'm not telling the council what to do if, if, if this wants to be tabled and, and the council wants to provide us with other names of roadways that they want to have added to this list. I certainly don't have an objection.
Adding roadways, I think we could just, we could amend.
I don't.
This is the first reading.
Do we have, could we have the insight that the traffic safety committee had when they eliminated some of those? What, what made them?
We certainly can.
Not, not Pulaski or not Factory or not, yeah, just so we can understand that, because you're right, you could probably put every road on here and.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, you know, certainly in Platts, you know, maybe Brookfield and Nottingham, it may be much more appropriate.
Yeah.
Uh, but once you start getting out on Kowisa and, uh, Green Bush and New London Turnpike.
Lose one.
It's certainly, uh, yeah.
Whole thing.
I'm not getting involved in that conversation.
So that, so if, if somebody comes to me and says. You know, you, I have this vehicle, but now I can't drive it to West Walk, what do I do?
Don't buy it.
So, well.
And, and, and that's been, and that's been, that's been the media campaign, that's been out there. Make sure you understand and, and contact your city in town about their ordinances, what they're going to do before you purchase a low speed vehicle. That's, that's been pushed.
And I know you said golf carts, right? And I, I don't disagree, but if you take a ride up to Lowe's on Route Two. And look at their new golf carts, they're selling for ten grand. They're souped up, jacked up, you know, so I don't know if you want to just take a glimpse at those and.
Oh, no, I've seen them, but they, they don't fall under the low speed vehicle law. So if we see those on the road, they're going to be on the back of a flatbed.
Because they have a, they have a plate holder and everything. I don't know if they can be registered.
Yeah, it's a little different there.
Yeah, my neighbors called me the village of Florida.
It's like a campground, they ride them around too.
Okay. All right, we can move forward.
Did you want to amend that?
So should we amend that now? Should we, can we approve it and, and then add those, reach in the second reading? Because you might have some different streets you want to add, or is that something we should table it and then add the streets before we read it the second time?
Are you asking?
I'm asking your opinion, your opinion, your opinion, yes.
My opinion, yes, I agree with the chief. I would just like to add, I'm thinking, kind of focusing on my, my area, uh, and my ward and looking at these as cut throughs. And I, and I'm sure there's more, I, I'm sure the chief can give us another couple if we need to, but I'm looking at mine and I think Pulaski Street should be added, but I agree with the ordinance. So with it being a first reading, if we were to just add Pulaski Street, on, on my opinion, add Pulaski Street, then second ordinance comes up and I'm voting yes.
A motion to amend that Pulaski.
Motion, make a motion to amend and add Pulaski Street to the list of streets.
Second.
Fall in favor on the amendment?
Hi.
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 All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, I would like to add Kowisa.
Kowisa out, make a motion to add Kowisa out.
It's already covered.
Is Kowisa on there?
State roads, right?
It's a state road.
It's a state road. So Kowisa, Main Street are all covered, Providence Street's covered.
Right.
Under the, under the state road aspect.
Right.
Okay, withdraw that motion.
Any public comment on this matter? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you, Al.
That was on the amendment.
That was your hour of entertainment.
That was on the amendment.
No, we, we voted on the amendment.
I voted on the amendment.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Al.
Liquor licenses. Request from the Falls Event Center LLC doing business as the Falls Event Center for a Class BV liquor license at Three Bridle Avenue, units four dash one and four A dash one.
Move the license.
License, do I have a second?
Second.
You think this is the party?
Yes.
How are we doing? Just state your name and address for the record.
Nicholas Heemond. I'm the attorney for Falls Event Center LLC. This is Peter Rosiello. He's the owner of the business. He's also the owner of the mill itself. What is, before he was an application for a BV license for a project that really is twenty years in the making. This is actually one of the original plans for the repurposing of the mill back when Mr. Rosiello bought it in two thousand and four. Returning a space to use, returning a portion of, portion of space being used, hasn't been used in over a hundred years, uh, as far as Peter can tell from looking at different historical plans. There was no floor. It's all been put in. Uh, so they've made a considerable investment with the idea of it being used as an event center, private parties, weddings, showers, things of that nature. Uh, it will not, um, be in operation other than when there is an event scheduled. Uh, so it won't be a situation where you have an ongoing restaurant that's open on a daily basis, a bar where people can go and sit on a daily basis. Uh, happy to agree that that would be a condition of the license, if granted, that if they change the business model to expand it to a type of use like that, that they not do that without coming before the council to make it known, um, that that is their intention. But it's not in the plan right now. It's not a, a thought, but obviously, you know, businesses tend to change as time goes on. So happy to make sure that we come back in before the council, if that ever happens. The capacity is five hundred is what they're approved for right now, and then that will change as seating and such as installed. So that would be the empty room capacity, uh, is approximately five hundred. They've already got that from the state, uh, excuse me, from the fire marshal. Pending Department of Health approval for our food prep area. Move forward with that in, in the event that the council's inclined to approve the request for the license. Um, Mr. Rosiello did do some outreach in the area. Uh, he did go over to, um, meeting some folks in the area, including the church. Uh, and it's all been pretty well received, at least the feedback that we've gotten on our end. So I do have some photos, uh, for you, if you're interested to see some of the work that's been done. Please.
So if, if you're looking at the mill, what is, um, like landmarks? I know the, um, some of the things you got, you have the flea market in there. The, um, am I, am I in the right location?
Just come on up, state your name and address for the record. State your name and address. Search, just state your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Peter Rosiello. Uh, and my address is eight seventy-five French Town Road, East Greenwich, Rhode Island, oh-two-eight-one-eight.
Thank you.
So the mill has been a, a process to, um, repurpose and utilize since two thousand and ten. And it is a place that, uh, businesses that probably wouldn't exist if they didn't have access to cheap space like that, um, to operate their, where their business model depended on that. This particular space is a space that was, uh, very significant in terms of, um, acquiring it and, um, it's adjacent to a waterfall. It, it is the boiler room, so that, utilization is no longer necessary because we provided gas heaters to the tenants, which is a much more efficient way to heat a five-acre building. And the, um, this was always a space that was, uh, special to me and the investors that were involved in this. And, uh, we spent considerable time and effort to develop it. Um, and I think it, the best, the, the highest and best use for the space is an event center um, where people can, um, you know, have parties and weddings and so forth. So it's about eight thousand square feet. It has an industrial, kind of an industrial look that's very appealing to people.
And obviously, you made it clear that it's an event center, but no events are planned now, and that's why it says date and time of event to be, to be determined. When you do have events, what would be your expected latest time of?
Say that again?
Expected latest time of opening, like staying open.
So I would presume that we would want to stay open late on a wedding or, you know, a, a event like that, but what, um, Nick had indicated to me is that the BV license goes to one AM.
So we're, we're asking for the, you know, the full extent of the BV license that allows you to operate until one AM. Because it's not a restaurant that's open on a daily basis, you're gonna have a concentration of those events on Fridays and Saturdays, maybe some Sundays. You know, don't get too many baby showers and weddings on a Tuesday evening. So I don't think you'll have, you know, late-night operations on those sensitive days at the beginning of the week. The operation will be concentrated, I think, just naturally towards the, towards the latter end of the week.
And again, I, I, I understand that. The other thing I would ask is, you know, you're talking about weddings and baby showers. Probably won't go to four hours at a night. But live bands, when we're talking that, being next to a residential area, one o'clock in the morning, you know, we, we've had other opportu- other areas in town that have bands, and we do get complaints because they're playing till one in the morning, drums, bass, whatever it may be. So I'm just asking, is that?
I would point out, and, and. Obviously, I, this is, um, just reporting on being in the space that we're talking about. This waterfall and this space is very remote.
Okay.
And the likelihood that anyone's ever gonna know anything we've done, just the way this is situated. And when you're out there, because I'm sixty-three years old, nobody can, I can't hear what anybody's saying. So it's like in this remote area, and the waterfall kind of muffles any noise. So I would find it improbable that neighbors, so the, most of the neighbors are literally two or three hundred feet up the hill across from the Agawam Mill. It's highly unlikely they're gonna hear anything we do, especially.
How about on the New London side? How far are you on the north?
It's a long way away, and it's because of how it's situated. It's highly unlikely if we did anything in there that they would ever know what's happening.
So you talk about five hundred max capacity. I look at these pictures. I'm not sure how you would fit five hundred in there, um, based on.
That's what the fire department has provided as a occupancy, based on their inspection status.
And tell me, oh, I was just gonna say, and a, a concern obviously would be parking.
Yes, so we have.
For how many?
Probably a hundred and fifty cars.
So do you have your other uses, would they be going on at the same time as you would have an event?
So because the mill has, uh, certain businesses do not operate during the period this would operate. Um, and so there's probably one or two businesses that would operate at the time this is operating, but the other thirteen would not.
And.
There's a lot of, uh, businesses that are open during the day and not open at night.
And, and with an event center, I mean, obviously, I would say if I owned it, you know, any event that would come in, you know, you wanna take. Um, and it's different from a baby shower to a possible, say, three-hour concert, that depending on what type of music, may bring different types of crowds. And parking would, I mean, everything's, everything is related. You know, parking may come into play. You can't regulate, you know, if you have three hundred people that wanna come, you know, you don't wanna say no. So how would you regulate that type of parking?
We'd have to accommodate the parking with making arrangements with, um, valet parking to, uh, so we're probably gonna work with the neighbors. But that's the kind of thing that we will confront based on the occupancy we confront with the use.
So I, I also think that a, a business like this is only successful if it's an asset to the community. And becoming a pain in the neck and a nuisance is not going to likely lead to very much success because we'll be back before you for a renewal of the liquor license, and we'll be dealing with it at that stage. Uh, I, I do think it is a good idea for us to stay in touch with the police or however the town prefers that you regulate those things so that they know the types of events we're having. We can provide them with a monthly schedule of what we're anticipating, and that way the police know what we're doing, and know, we know what to expect. If they see something that's of concern, there's an opportunity for us to have a dialogue and work to alleviate those types of issues as they come up. And then if, God forbid, something, you know, does occur that's problematic, it'll be very clear what kind of event it was, who was involved, and we can, you know, take that as a learning experience and, and move forward to make sure that we don't let anything happen again.
And again, weddings and baby showers probably won't have any effect, but concerts. How, and Chief and Chief, you guys can probably answer this. If the individual's having a big concert there, how does crowd control and say whether I need police or fire detail? If we issue this permit, this is obviously for all events. So if they have an event of, oh, some big singer comes in, how do, how do you know they're having the event if they have a permit of this style?
Mr. President, if I may, you can control the entertainment aspect of a BV license. So if you wanna keep that as a separate issue, if they're gonna have a specific event, it'd have to come before you get your authority to have that specific event. So under three-seven, seven-point-three, uh, it's laid out restriction on entertainment. So you can provide them with carte blanche if it's gonna be a, um, DJ or, um, you know, pre-recorded music versus a live band. So you could put restrictions on that level of entertainment.
Well, I'm, I'm bringing this up because I know in Jay's ward down the other mill. Manchester sixty-five had a concert that drew state police, our police department, multiple police departments, because of the known trouble, because they advertised the concert.
I remember well.
But if they don't have, if they don't have, they have this license, if they can have a concert anytime they want.
No, no, no. This town council says you cannot have a live concert. You can't have a live concert because you control what goes on with a BV license.
It says band and DJ, so.
Understood, but, but the, the state statute that's gonna supersede says there's a restriction on entertainment. If you put that restriction into play and they agree to it, that's great. If they're going to say we may have a concert, someone's gonna come, we expect a crowd of five hundred people.
I think it's, it's a, it's a matter of the flexibility to be able to have weddings without having to come into every single council meeting and saying, oh, we need a DJ for the wedding. You know, I, I don't think there'd be any objection that in the event that one of the events was going to be a concert. Again, that's not really our intention, not to say that someone may not have an event that's worthwhile and they wanna do it. We don't have any objection to coming in and making you aware of, uh, of an event like that that was gonna take place. Um, you know, it's distinguishable from someone who has a band playing for their wedding music. The sole purpose of the event being something like that.
But we, we've been through it, so we just, you know, to err on the side of caution.
I've been on the other side of it many times, so I have no problem saying that, you know, we would come in to make you aware of what's going on.
The spaces are segregated, and they're unique, these are places. They're not suited to this massive event with a singer, stage, I'm arguing. A spread-out area, multiple areas.
Okay.
That is huge.
So you don't have anything planned right now, right?
No.
No, so I would ask you to table it. Um, the, uh, members that went out, um, in, um, in good faith and spoke with the, um, with Peter, um, were not aware that, of the event persona. Okay, so they did go out there, they did get an average size, and, and, um, they also talked to you about, um, egresses and, um, and a few other things. Um, they have not been backed out to see any, if any of that work has been done. Although that capacity might be a hun- five hundred people up to. Um, nothing from the fire department has been, um, finished as far as that. So I would ask you to postpone it. If you don't have an event, that shouldn't be a problem. I think we can square this up. We're here to support you. I, I don't want to, you know, but I, we need to make sure that things are done. Not as an event, not as an event. I believe that they did. Not as an event. Not as an event.
So, Peter, you're saying that it could be an event for up to five hundred people, yet you just said that it's compartmentalized, and it's not conducive to a large concert.
Right, I wanted to help. I want to help you do it, but these guys are the right way.
Okay.
The way in which this plays out is the manner in which the market can respond to a historical adaptive reuse space that has the appeal it has. And be accommodated on that basis, you know, so. It is what it is. You know, it, it, it has the constraints it has, it has the appeal it has. And what I think it will yield to is parties and weddings and people that think that is this very appealing place to have a celebration.
And I, I would agree based.
Discussions with the Westwood Fire Department in which, so first of all, we had done all the work. It took a year and two months. They had inspected it. They had approved the build-out as three units. And then the decision got made to utilize it for this purpose. It was disclosed to them that we were utilizing that for that purpose at the meeting that, that we had. And, um, so there was no finding that was in writing relating to the occupancy. So I have a manager, Franco, who is a, um, so I have all these great entrepreneurs that that are utilizing the mill that probably wouldn't do business without having access to something like that. And Franco's this guy that runs the boxing gym. We're still boxing in this culture, but there is, and he has, um, he's had a multiplicity of, of events associated with that boxing gym. He also has a, um, line and paint bar in the mill. And, um, I thought it was a great idea to utilize him and, you know, this very special space to, to make it something unique instead of making it.
I, I don't think anybody disagrees with you. I, I, based on the pictures, it's beautiful. It definitely has an appeal. That being said, I, I wanna make sure that our fire chief is comfortable with what, and I assume that wouldn't take very long, Chief Verone.
So what the chief and I were kind of discussing on the side, and, you know, these issues come up
Sure.
all the time with licensing. You know, I think what Peter's concerned is, is, you know, just the nature of public meetings as they are spaced out. You don't meet every day. Uh, and there are other things and investments that they need to make. I think all of which will be made, whether the capacity is five hundred, four hundred. I mean, this is what they wanna do with the space. And occupancy and capacity is what it is, right? Subject to variances here and there. So I, I don't disagree that there's any harm in having the fire department just look at it now that he's done everything and gotten it done to see that what they wanted to see is there and, um, making sure that the capacity still is what it is. What I had suggested was, s- you know, sort of building on the idea that since there are no events, that, um, if the council was inclined to grant the license with whatever conditions they may be, that one of the conditions of that be that it not be utilized until the town fire and state fire both have signed off on occupancy. I think that's a standard condition.
Let me kind of interrupt.
Sure.
You know, because we do approve these licenses pending police, fire, and building code officials. So I don't have a problem with that. I want you to understand, you know, this is West. officials. So I don't have a problem with that. I want you to understand, you know, this is West Warwick. You know, we've had, we had a bad history twenty years ago and we need, we need to make sure that we are doing things right. And if the chief's coming up saying, well, we haven't approved that, we haven't approved this, we want to make sure that the fire department does do their due diligence and, you know, we don't, we have everything covered. We want to make sure that the town's covered. I think it's a great idea what you're doing because there are no more of those facilities around there, you know. You end up in Connecticut or wherever you may be for a wedding and I think it's, you know, I know you've got a lot of money invested into the mill. You've been there many years trying to. I think that's one of the more successful business mills that's still around here. So most of them have been turned into apartments, so. Um I don't, I don't disagree. Yeah, so.
And I think it's a great idea. I I really do. I I again, I do have a little problem with a five hundred capacity and a hundred and fifty spaces. That doesn't work for me. But I don't know how we figure that out, but that's something that Chief Verone and Chief Levine would would take a look at. But I assume that can be done fairly quickly.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
On average, two people show up in a car, three people, so.
Okay.
That's what you gotta look at.
Building officials in here, if we haven't been there, I don't know if the building official's been there.
Can I just ask a couple of questions?
The building official signed off on the building. You came in after we had disclosed the proposed use of an event center. Add an extension where you're willing to suspend.
But we don't have to rewrite the constitution.
If if I may, just a couple of quick questions. What floor is this facility gonna be on in the mill? What floor?
It's all accessible by the first floor. There are two egresses on each individual.
So we don't have to worry about stairs and elevators. Second issue besides.
Could you speak into the mic, though?
Besides your non-kitchen, non-bar, stage area, how many square feet do you have?
Eight thousand.
And when you, I haven't seen the pictures, but how many bars do you think you'd have in there? One or two? Two?
And you have a food prep? I'm sorry, I'm gonna just butt in because as we're talking, but you have a food prep area.
I have a food prep consistent with the standards. It does not exist because we're waiting to get this.
What you're looking to do is recreate basically what Nino's used to be and what West Valley Anne used to be.
Well, maybe. In a middle space, but but I also, I want to caution you. I don't know what discussions you've had with the sewer. That putting in a food will make a difference. So I think you want to make sure you touch base with them pretty quickly, too. They have to sign off on on the license as well. Just giving you a heads up as far as that goes.
So we, we've had to deal with the sewer on a number of different things at the mill.
I'm aware of that.
So we know we've got to deal with that. The investment that has to go into the food prep area, so on and so forth, doesn't work without approval of the liquor license, subject to all of those things. So it's all stuff that we're aware of. It's all stuff that we we need to deal with. We gotta get the Department of Health to sign off on the food prep area. Peter's got the food safety certificate. Uh both Peter and the manager Franco have tip certifications, so on and so forth.
So we're the first step.
Crowd management, yep.
Well, I I can tell you, I I love the idea. I think it's a great idea. However, I feel more comfortable after the chief checks it out. It comes back to us because you're obviously, I mean, I know what you want to do, but you're looking for our vote. So if something were to happen and we're up here and we cast, say, the wrong vote, then we're hung out to dry and I don't, I don't want to, I don't think two weeks is gonna hurt. So can this be done before our September third council meeting? Okay. I feel a lot more comfortable having to cast a vote after that's done.
So I've been sitting here trying to think of how to word this. Um I have concerns. Um and I'm I'm gonna ask this respectfully, but less than a year ago, there was a website that was promoting the fact that they were moving to three bridal lav. And it didn't come to fruition. And my concern is with the type of events that you're gonna be holding. I'm all for business. I'm all for recreating um a space where people can go and enjoy weddings, showers, uh retirement parties and all that. And I can tell by your reaction that you know what I'm talking about. So my biggest concern is that it's not used for something outside of those parameters. And if you don't know what I'm talking about, I will gladly tell you what I'm talking about.
So we had a process.
Speak into the mics again.
Based on a Craigslist ad for space in the mill that was unrelated to this space, that was unfinished mill space that proposed uh and.
Adult entertainment type thing, yes.
Correct, and he, we told him you could not do that. We, the investors associated with the mill did not agree to it. He went on his own irrespective of any agreement. So it's interesting that this process would bring up something where there's no legal basis. There was no legal agreement made. That somebody simply, yeah, let me finish. Somebody simply posting on the internet and utilizing the address of a building that that would become a pay, a basis for a conclusion on the part of a government entity to have any finding. So what happened is, we told him you couldn't do that here. He wanted to do that. We told him you couldn't do it. And he put an ad in anyway.
Okay.
Okay, so do you have, was there any documentation associated with Wes Warwick to seek that utilization? Because as you're aware, if we rented the mill, we would be required to go through a series of steps. As we have with all the businesses in this business incubator to allow them to utilize that space so they could conduct business in your town. So you have an awareness that that's the process anyone would need to go through. Do you have any awareness that there was a process where a person with the sex industry business sought occupancy in the mill?
So in your agitated state, do you think that it's not a valid question for us to ask you?
Absolutely not. I do not think it's valid. There was no basis for that. It was a person.
I think it's getting lost in. All right, just relax.
So you can keep talking and make this worse for yourself? Or you can let us ask the questions that we are asking for our constituents? We are responsible to them. And if I don't ask those questions, then I'm a failure. So sir, if you're gonna come up here looking for something from this body, I suggest you answer our questions.
So I just think it's a question that's lost in translation. I think he took it as.
I was looking for clarification. I wasn't, I wasn't digging. I didn't come straight out and say it was a sex club that was advertising on their website for three bridal lav West Warwick Island. I simply wanted to know if that was going to be considered as an event here.
Right. I understood your question that way.
Sir, let me just clarify, and the reason why you probably asked that question.
No, I I don't. I understand.
Manchester sixty five came before this council and did the same exact thing. They came before this council for a banned license, BV license, and then all of a sudden snuck in a fetish club. Okay? And that was unbeknownst to anybody here that was going on in Crompton on Thursday nights.
And we're not saying that's what you're looking to do. But we have to be responsible to our constituents who have these concerns.
As a person who stands before councils every day, I understand your question and I took it for what it was. Mr. Rosiello, I think, took it differently as if you were alleging he had some involvement. I know that's not what you're intending to do.
I was looking towards the future. I wasn't looking in the past.
I think it was just lost in translation.
Okay.
So.
And we're thankful that he would deny and he and his co-owners would not allow that to happen, so.
And and I can tell you, you can put a condition on this license that if it became an adult whatever, that you revoke it immediately. I'm not afraid of any of that.
At this point, that's.
So that is, again, when I think of this space and I look at these pictures and I've talked to Peter and, you know, you think he appears frustrated right now, but is very excited about this opportunity, I think of it closer to what they've done sort of with the Water Fire Event Center. It, you know, a space like that.
Which is great.
And we don't have a lot of places in Rhode Island. You know, we throw, my office, we throw a big Christmas event every year, holiday party. And there's only like three places that we can have it, Water Fire Event Center being one of them. And you don't have options. You know, if you don't want to be in that hotel, you know, maroon carpet.
I don't think anybody's disagreeing.
And I won't speak for the rest of the council, but I can tell you that I would really support that. That would be something that I think this town could really benefit from.
And I know what Manchester sixty five is. I know the story of all that. I've seen it. Um, you know, I represent places that get jammed up from time to time. Didn't see me here on something like that. Um so I get it. I get it. And that is just could not be further from the vision of this space. It it is not reflect.
It's simply what I was asking.
Right, and and I.
That is a perfectly acceptable answer and I wasn't, I wasn't.
And I think it just lost in translation. You know, I don't think you meant anything by it.
Absolutely not.
I don't think Peter's frustration, I think he just didn't underst- I think he missed the question for what the spirit it was.
There is a fifteen year record of making the mill available to businesses. Legitimate.
Yeah.
So I don't think there would be any basis on one long spark who had empirical underpinning to their conclusion about what could happen in the future that the people that have managed that mill for the last fifteen years and have provided good clean space for Martin Woodworks or the boxing gym or the granite guy or the fifteen people that have businesses and are performing those services for the public. I I wouldn't see any empirical basis to conclude that because somebody disseminated it, put with no cost an ad on the internet and referenced that address. I would think that somebody that had done their due diligence would say there's a lot more information about how these people that are running this mill have conducted themselves than that singular event that had no relationship between the actions of the people managing the mill.
So I I would like to to vote right now to table this so the fire chief can do his due diligence and report back to us what his findings are and where they stand before I cast my vote. Which, so I would like to table this until our September third meeting. I don't know how anybody else feels.
I'll make that motion.
Sec.
Yes, till September.
Sure, it's continue table, which.
Continue it to September third.
September third.
And whatever information you require.
Chief, is that enough, is that enough time?
Yeah.
We can attempt to get that through Mr. Heeman's office.
I have a motion to table. I'm gonna, Mr. Toad, do you have a comment on this?
Thank you.
Because I'll shut down and I'll comment once a motion to table is, but I know.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Um Mr. Rosiello, thank you. I'm not sure of the name. Uh Mr. Rosiello, I want you to know that long before this topic was brought up by Councilman Dennison, the internet was lit up. Text messaging, there's a lot of people out there watching this. And people, i- it it's just crazy out there. Look at my phone. People, is this the club from One Socket that was gonna open up at the mill that we people read into that? And they, maybe they shouldn't have, but they did. It's a legitimate question. It's our town. So I know you got excited and I know you're passionate about getting this business up and running, but I do believe and I I hate to say this, but I I I think an apology to the council, especially Mr. Dennison.
No, not necessary.
That's not necessary.
But but anyway, it's, there's a lot of people and I'm directing Mr. Rosiello and you were telling, there's a lot of people that that's the first thing that popped into head. Because when that did come up, a year ago, people were wild.
About it, but he made it very clear that's not it.
Asked and answered.
Thank you so much for me, and I'm glad it got clarified for all the people out there that are watching.
And he should be angry that someone can go on the internet and use his address for something. He should be angry. Not in this body, but you should be angry.
Absolutely.
You're well within your right to be angry.
So thank you.
No, there's no need for that.
Ask and answer, and I appreciate the answer.
Yeah. So there's been a motion to table?
No.
Did I have a second?
Second.
Was it the table or was it two?
The table to September, no, no, continue to September third.
Yes, the next council.
Second.
Motion to continue to Sep- September third. Is it your birthday? Oh, you're the fifth. Yep, I'm the fourth, he's the fifth.
All right.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
At the moment, everybody's been waiting for. No, you can just tell them.
Then business licenses.
Move the business licenses.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion on the business licenses? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. That is Club Front Neck, Pochke's American Sports Club, American Citizens Club, Pochke's Holy Ghost, Pochke's Instructional Club, Holy Ghost, Holy Ghost, American Citizens Club, The Moody Brewer, The Falls Event Center, which
Oh.
Same thing. And Pop on the Block.
Yeah.
And renewals for all mechanical amusement devices for all the same clubs. Uh KMJ Inc., LA Cafe, Phoenix Sportsman's Club, Pochke's American Citizens Club, the Pochke's Instructional Recreation Club, Pochke's American Sports Club, The Holy Ghost, Ray's Polly Queen, Sergeant David Landevan and Amon Boudreaux Post 449, JJ's Cafe, 293, PVD, doing business as Boomerangs, Deborah's Down the Road, American Legion, and I think I got Club Front Neck, Crompton Vets Organization, and that's all been approved.
Subject to.
Subject to police, fire and building code.
And sewer.
And sewer.
If needed.
If needed, correct. As we do always.
Appointments and resignations request from Stephen Carnero for appointment to the zoning board for term ending July twenty twenty nine.
Move the appointment.
Second. For the record, Councilman Messia, accused himself for the last two years. I have a motion and a second. Um I know Stephen fairly well. He's been involved in real estate for most of his life. Um his resume is on here. Anybody have any questions?
No, I mean, the only question I have, and it's not a question, it's just a comment with some of the changes that have happened in the state as to whether we should, in the future, not now, look at combining planning and zoning uh to make it easier for applicants to come through and make it a little more manageable, given some of the the duties that have changed for the two.
Com- combining meaning having.
Having one board. No, not necessarily. You'd have to figure that. I mean, one board, yeah.
Small board.
Well, you'd have to figure out how that would work, but it it would streamline things. Again, that has nothing to do with it. Yeah, it's another conversation, but uh something that I think as a as a council we should consider. Makes practical sense. And I know we're never accused of doing those things, so, yes, yeah.
Sometimes. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. He's here, it's fine, no. Said he was gonna try to get here.
New business. Approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the town of West Warwick, local two twenty forty five Rhode Island. Approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of West Warwick, Local two twenty forty-five, Rhode Island Council ninety-four.
Say we take no action on this tonight?
Right.
Resolution approving salary adjustments for part and full-time non-union employees in fiscal years twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven.
Move the resolution.
Second. Moving second, is Mark still on, is he?
I am on, am I too loud?
No.
You're good.
No.
Perfect, uh, again, thank you for tolerating my remote access due to COVID. Specifically here on this agenda item, uh, the town council, the, and the administration recognizes the need to fairly compensate. Our employees who are not represented by labor unions, um, with the exception of Council ninety-four, which we anticipate. Ratifying soon, um, I am recommending salary adjustments in order to make our other. Positions to be more competitive and with, make us more successful in attracting and retaining the highest caliber employees. So I'm recommending that we do salary increases of three percent effective July first of the. The next three fiscal years, um, for our non-union and union, uh, excuse me, non-union part-time. And non-union full-time employees, and also the manager adjustment of two point seven five for that same period. To put us on par in schedule with the schedules anticipated on our three labor unions.
Any discussion from the council, any questions for Mark?
Sorry, so that was three and three?
Three years, three years. Yes, and for the town manager, two seven five.
So that allows us to adequately and prepare our budgets for the next three years as we have our labor, um, essentially locked in, our labor cost.
Any questions for Mark? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Resolution approving change order number two to the Ice Chiller System Project twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-five from ARPA Fonds.
Move the resolution.
Second. Mark?
Again, as I mentioned during the change order last time, that we anticipated. Um, a a study coming done on some potential leakage. Um, the the findings were there, there is some minor leakage, and this resolution before you is to address. Some of that, um, with, and install isolation valves and other associated parts and protective measures. In the amount of twenty-five thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty-four cents coming from American Rescue Plan Funds.
So Mark, is that gonna be the end of it, is, I mean, do we anticipate any more expense coming?
Uh, I'm a knock on wood type of person, I I like to think that they're, they're far along and they're going. Uh, they're on schedule for the installation, so I I think they're, you know, short of. Other minor accessories, I I think we're on target to to finish the project successfully.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment, any questions for Mark? Hearing Mark, not that is. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Resolution approving ARPA funds for improvements to the Civic Center Plaza project.
Move the resolution.
Second. In a second, Mark?
So I I think we're hopefully coming to a conclusion over the next, um, few weeks to get this project done. Um, the remaining items, um. Is the allocate the funds for the flagpoles, the lighting of the poles, the concrete, the signage. Irrigation and some landscaping improvements. I've spoke to everybody, and it looks like over the next two weeks, we should have a majority of that project completed. And I'm estimating the remaining costs to be approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars, so I would. Respectfully request that we encumber twenty-seven thousand out of American Rescue Plan Funds to successfully finish this project.
And the goal there, Mark, is to get it done before school, I assume.
That is the goal, um, I I spoke to one of the volunteers this afternoon, and, uh, he's. Hopeful to be able to accommodate that schedule, weather permitting.
So Mark, who who's doing this part of the project?
Uh, essentially, the town is doing the vast majority of it, we had a, a company install irrigation. Um, there's a a private party that has volunteered to install the concrete with us paying for the concrete, so. It's a essentially a a team effort to to get it done and make it look like a a safe and respectable respectable part.
Is it, so my my only concern, because there's there's different people doing different things, and. What's there is there, and it looks, it looks great. I just want to make sure there's a flow and everything matches, and it doesn't look like there's two separate projects. Um, adjoining the same space.
Yeah, I'll kind of reiterate what Jason's saying, and this, this obviously is a little difficult for me to jump in on this, but. I don't, I don't know what's going on, I I haven't seen a plan, I don't know what we're spending twenty-seven thousand dollars on. I would feel a lot better if I knew what was happening. And again, it, I'm in a bit of an awkward spot here, so I'm just speaking from the heart that I I would really love to know what's going on.
Well, I'd be more than happy to part of, put that together as best I can remotely with the cost estimates and. A design drawn from here, but it it has been shown around, we have visited, visited it, and. I think it it'll, it'll be appropriate, obviously, we're not in a position to. Compete with the memorial section, my goal is to have something that accompanies that, that looks, that is safe and does not take away from it, but provides. A a, a nice looking respectable access to the facilities that we have.
And I I will be honest and say, some of the reason this is delayed is my fault. Because when I actually saw what was going to be there, I did not think it met the standards of what is there, um. And, because concrete was gonna be poured at the end of May, and it was, it was a a walkway that was six feet wide, and that's not. I don't think lended itself to approaching the memorial, so.
Is there like a, like some, is there a piece of paper like this?
I actually don't know, I'd have to ask.
You go, this is what, this is the final, the final product, the final project.
I'm not sure if there is, is there, I I know that when I saw what I saw. Yeah, well, that's scary, but that's a, yeah, um, I know when I saw. When I saw what it was, so yes, there can be something, there can be a back, I'm sure.
So there, there was asphalt there, okay, and the town tore it back out. And decided to go with Jeff's recommendation of a, a cement walkway up the middle. Along with other people's recommendation, and I know Mary Beth, myself, we talked about an hourglass. And when we went up there and saw the actual forms laid down, it it was very shallow, narrow. Wasn't made for two-way traffic, so the ultimate plan right now is an hourglass walkway up the middle, grass on both sides. Irrigation center, because I think we talked about it here, that they wanted to do turf, and. I think I kind of pushed back on the turf side of it and said, because it's gonna, it's on a hill, it's gonna curdle, it's gonna. Frumble up on the bottom, I think we talked about that here, and, yeah, and so. Ultimately, we went back to grass, so that's why the irrigation's now being put in. And the flagpoles, that was all done already, that was already designed.
My, my issue, to be honest, is if, I'm not, I'm not opposed to say, Mark, here's the money to finish the project. My issue, to be honest, is if you went right now and you want to design a Crompton playground, you can look through that, all five of us could. The fact that I'm coming in here voting on spending money, and I don't know what the hell it's gonna look like. No offense, your word, which I get, you should be the, you should be in on this, you know about it, I don't. At this point, it's not your word, it's not my word, I'm a member of the council, so are you.
Talked about it here.
So, I'm, I'm more concerned with.
No, this was, this was talked about through Mark with his opera movie, just in one of the last.
I'm just looking, it's a town-wide project, it's not something small, and I think we should all, from, from Jay to me, should be included on. This is what, this is what it's gonna look like. You know, and that's it. I think that's only fair. I mean, with Crompton.
I don't know who's throwing the F-bomb out there, but if I hear it again, you'll be asked to leave.
So, so in Crompton, it's, Mark's keeping me abreast on what's going on, I don't know who else he's talking to. But it's something where you should all be involved, and this is what it's gonna look like, because it's gonna, it's gonna look awesome. But you should all know about it, you know.
And again, I think it's on Mark's weekly reports, I think it's on his weekly reports.
I don't think we see pictures, but we know what we are.
I'm looking.
It's not, it's not an actual architectural plan, but I think he's put out what he's.
But you're, you're putting a park in, so it should be something that I think you'd be able to see, especially if we're gonna comment on spending. I mean, you know, you're not spending a couple grand, you know, so, just like Factory Street, we went, when we went and talked about. The, uh, if we're gonna use mulch or the rubber or that kind of stuff, came before us, you know, we all discussed it. That's all I'm gonna say with this, but yes, I'm, I'm for.
The, the only concern I would have is, is to have that, and I'm sure, Mark, you could put something together for the group. But to delay that, if that means delaying, I I don't, I don't want to do that.
I don't want to delay, but it should be something.
I delayed it already, and and I will take full responsibility for delaying it already, absolutely, it was my, my issue. Um, because I don't, I don't think what we were going to do. Was appropriate or lended itself to what's there now, which is beautiful, so.
You know, I, I, I'm certainly not gonna vote against funding this, um.
But it's fair to get, to get a, a, an itemized list.
An idea of of what it's gonna look like, and and obviously, what's up there now is, especially to me, it's an amazing site, and I, I. I know that you guys are gonna make it.
Yeah.
Marry up to that site well, um.
We've actually, we've actually even had.
Spend the rest of the ARPA money on it.
Well, that's not gonna happen, but we've actually also, and I I see Mr. Reed coming here now, I've had conversations with both Mr. Reeds. And they have offered to to be there to make sure that it does indeed look like, um, so they, I, I have shared. What my vision was. And how, how I thought it was wrong is what we were doing, and, um, and I, I, again, I know that there's some concern that it has been delayed, and that's all on me. Because it could have been done as originally laid out in May, and I don't think that would have done it justice to the whole, the whole project, so. So, Mark, if you could just maybe give, give, uh. A little bit of an itemize to people, I don't know that we have a visual, but I bet we could do something pretty quick.
I will take care of it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Do you have a comment from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Proclamation to recognize August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four as International Overdose Awareness Day.
Move the proclamation.
Second. Moving second, any discussion? Is this, uh, will this be added to the, is this already on the, um. Correspondence for the agenda, maybe we could add the.
I think we were sent an invite, which is this, what this is also, right?
Yeah, all right.
So what's before you is the annual proclamation declaring August thirty-first overdose. Awareness Day, internationally recognizing it in town, and I also ask that the invitation that we got. Because it, the events will be happening on days other than October, or correction, August thirty-first be. Put before you, just so you have it for your personal calendars, and we'll post it as well.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Full Building Committee update.
Who wants to give the update, Mark? Mary Beth and myself. Mark?
So, so essentially, we've, we've met, we've absorbed the stage one findings. Um, and now our architect is in the process of putting. Um, I I call them more generalized proposals together based on the options and the direction given. Um, they're extremely generic at this point, um, just, for example, looking at the various pieces of town property. Um, the school, the school properties on what areas actually could be. New builds could go on, which ones are more acclimated towards renovations. Um, what other town property is available, and they're putting all those things together now, so, um, I think over the next. Month and a half, two months, we'll have some more solidified options, I don't have the calendar funny, but I believe September eighteenth. Um, if anyone's able to confirm that, is gonna be the first of the public. Um, meetings, if you will, um, once school is back in session, so we will have a a bigger, broader audience. Um, of people that are, would be intimately interested, um, to start sharing those things, so I believe they're, they're scheduled and. That I think that form with all those dates should be approved. Um, as early as hopefully tomorrow morning, if it hasn't been already, and we'll get those dates publicized, um, so we can get the public involvement.
I think it's, I think it's the eighteenth, I agree with you, there's a date in September, a date in October, and a date in November. To actually invite people to come and listen and and give some input, um, I think they'll be held at the auditorium, if I remember. And there also is a website that is. Almost done, that will have all of this information in a place where people can go and and see the application, original application for phase one. Um, so all that stuff is being done with the understanding that the public needs to be included on a regular basis.
Any questions for Mark, Mary Beth and myself on that? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Good.
Upcoming appointments, Sewer Use Board to Review, Appointment to fill a vacancy as an alternate member for a three-year term. Sewer Use Board to Review, Appointment to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a three-year term, Tax Assessment Board to Review, Appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term. School Build- Building Committee, Architectural, Engineering, and Construction Experience Needed. Tree Warden must be a licensed arborist, Recreation Committee, Appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term. Zoning Board, Appointment or Reappointment for a five-year term, that was filled this evening. And West Warwick two hundred and fiftieth Commission, Public Forum.
Before we get up and speak, I, I do have a letter here that I was asked to read into the record by an individual. Um, his name is on this document, but I'm not gonna be sharing this name. This is a very tough read. Because. All know the individuals, so it's, it's, it's a very tough read for me, so if I get choked up, please, because I've read this twice now. Dear Council President Goslin, Goslin and Honorable Council Members and Town Manager Knopf. On Wednesday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, at approximately twelve twenty PM, a nine-one-one call was placed and dispatched to my home for a mental health evaluation. Suicidal ideation. What many folks don't see nor feel in the aftermath of working within a municipality as a, as public servants, we learn to bury those horrifying. Episodes deep in the back of our minds and don't speak of them at all. Until it's too late and they overcome your mind, and that's what happened to me. Many of us remember that cold winter night in February two thousand and three, and I'll leave it at that. That is only one of two issues of my diagnosis of PTSD and trauma that caused me to attempt self, a selfish act. As I explained to Chief Verone in a personal phone call. Had I been still part of the fire service, I would have received all the help in the world. But when you retire, leave, or move on, you get forgotten about and left behind, alone in your head. And that's where I was at this point. So at that point, a call was made to come rescue the rescuer. So at this time, I'd like to thank the following gentlemen publicly and personally, who acted with the utmost professionalism and respect. In my time of need, and that both Chief Verone, Colonel Levine should be proud of their men. It's because of them I'm still here, Captain Paul McAllister. Mike Booth, Engine One. Luke Hogan. Tyler Lopez, Rescue. Sergeant Roberto Andrade. Patrolman Richard Napolitano. In closing, our two small donations on my behalf for each chief to place an account. For any past, present, or future firefighter or police officer that feels they need to seek professionalism help from the stress of their jobs. As I said to Chief Verone, it's not much, but it gets one person to their first visit. And the help they so well deserve, I achieved my goal. In closing, I hope in the future the towns municipalities take advantage of the programs that are available and offered to them. For their needs prior to this becoming a serious issue as it was for me, respectfully, the individual. So on behalf of this individual, Chief Verone, Chief Levine, I have a file here for you. And I've had two phone conversations. And I've had two phone conversations with this individual since he dropped this letter off, and. You know, it does, it hits home because it, our servicemen and women, our police fire. When they do retire, things change for them sometimes, they go back to a different life, so. I'm glad the individual brought this up to us, and, you know, I, I hope we can look at that, and I know our H R does work with. Very closely with many things to trust and all that, but as they leave here, what's being done, so that's a, that's a good question. So again, I, I think the individual probably is watching, they were gonna try to be here tonight, very tough time. But thank you for the awareness, and I wish you the best of luck, and if you have any anybody to talk to, we're all here for you. Thank you.
Public comment?
Public comment.
John Reed, sixty-two Andrews Avenue. As far as the memorial goes, I've talked to some of you. We are more than willing to work with whoever's gonna be doing it at no charge. To lay out the radius, I guess there was a radius issue. Um, and yes, D P W, and I know who's gonna be doing the concrete, I've already spoke with him. We have no issues, we just would like to be all on the same page. To make it. As presentable as possible with the funds that we have. And we're willing to do this, myself, my son, Brian. You've already used a, a sprinkler guy, he did the sprinkler work up there. Um. I would just offer our services to try to help you to get to your goal. On another note, I believe this issue is gonna be resolved tomorrow, but just so you know. Um. And thank God I've calmed down. The. Stones that are in the memorial pond. And on the backside of that. Some of you may be aware, some of you may not be aware. I'm only gonna ask you one question, where do they come from?
Those stones come from a lake in Vermont, that was, uh, very special to Matthew and, and equally special to me.
And you brought those in?
My daughter Katie went diving for those.
We just, yes, you and your daughter, when we discussed certain things that nobody knew about the memorial. Subsequently. Um, children from the civic center. Have been allowed. Or gone unnoticed, taking the rocks out of there. And painting them, coloring them, leaving them by the doors and so forth and so on. And if this wasn't. If these were just rocks. And this was just a pond, I couldn't care less, they're empty, I'll go get more. But I think. The memorial is a, a year and a half old, if I'm not mistaken, doesn't matter. I would just ask that within your country, you would have a discussion with managers of. Whatever facilities. That, that is kind of a sacred ground, and. I don't think children should be allowed in there to take rocks out. And paint them, they had to get the paint from somewhere.
So, Mr. Reed, I, I, I did speak to Lori today, she called me, um, she is not at work today, I guess it happened today. Um, she is not at work today, she's out with her daughter on her birthday. And she will deal with the issue tomorrow.
That's what I said, I, I know this is gonna be resolved.
And I, and I, and she will have an, an individual conversation of why individuals were. Able to go over there and pick those rocks and paint them. Okay, and that will be discussed, so, and, and she's well aware of it. After, I think you called some, another council person. And he reached out to her and got, you know, and again, she wasn't at work, so she did not know what was going on, so she will deal with it tomorrow.
I'm not here to point fingers at anybody, the time span's been a while, it didn't just happen yesterday.
Okay.
Alright, and I'm not saying this one, I'm just saying. To me, it means a lot, okay, to that individual, it means a lot more. To the rest of the town people.
Shouldn't take anything from them, okay?
No.
It's a grounds that we thought was gonna get damaged, the children in the schools, respect it. Which I was shocked. I just ask that we just don't forget, because it's not brand new anymore, that it's still something that we take pride in. You know, and, you know, I do it. There's three places in this town, and I do it because I feel like doing it, I wanna do it. But my son and I take out about twelve thousand dollars a year out of our pocket for three places in this town. So when something happens to them. It kinda takes, hits me personal. That's all I ask.
Yeah, I, I would think, John, that I don't imagine it was personal in any way, shape, or form in this instance, but, but everyone who is. Participating up there should understand that it is a sacred place, and as far as the, I mean, I was unaware of how important the rocks are. And, and it, and there is a, it's all over the state of Rhode Island, you, you get a rock, you paint it, you put it, somebody else, it's some sort of, and you go online. I'm sure that's what, I'm sure it was innocent in nature, I, and.
I didn't say it was malicious.
What I think, what I think has to happen is. Maybe the discussion has to be had with each child that's up there about how important and how sacred it is. Yeah, yeah, yes.
This is one of the things that we, I stated. When we were developing this thing.
Yep.
Is maybe this is an educational thing.
I agree.
For multi-purposes, drunk driving, accidents. You know, a multitude of things that these children could be brought out there.
Just to cherish life, yes.
And this memorial, explain to them, because as time goes on, there's gonna be children that have no idea what this means.
Mm-hmm.
And it would carry on what we initially tried to do. So I'm not picking on nobody.
No.
You know, and maybe that wasn't told there, there's, there's probably twelve things involved in that memorial. That only him, myself, and my son know, and his wife and daughter.
Yep.
There's certain measurements, there's distances, that all we went to them.
There's a lot of hidden features in that.
I actually have, I have stumbled on a few of them, yes, and, and, yeah.
So I'm, I'm gonna try to put a cap on this and, and say, you know, I called John on the way to the meeting today, and, um, I had spoken to Lori. And we came, you know, to a, an agreement that it was never intentional.
No.
We knew that, we just wanted to make sure there was awareness, but, you know, where John was more upset. What, he, he took as disrespect to Matthew, I took it as more they were, they were altering John's work. I mean, the lake in Vermont, it's, it's never gonna change, it's, it's where we spent all our summers, um. My uncle would be happy to get rid of more rocks, if we need to get more rocks out of there and make a little more sandy bottom, that's fine. So it's not about the rocks itself, it's about the hard work that John and, and Derek and their crew put in, and obviously, there's, there's a, an aspect. That's related to Matthew as well, and we know it's children, children are never disrespectful intentionally, not at that age, it's nothing like that, um. You know, this doesn't need to be blown up, it's just something that we wanna make sure. You know, it's placed between a field house and an ice rink, where there's a summer camp, and there's youth hockey, and there's. There's things that are gonna happen, but the more we make people aware of what it's all about, I think the fewer issues, issues we'll have. So I don't see this as a, as a dark day, um, other than I was upset that John's work was undone a little bit, and, and he was the opposite. Yeah, and, and I didn't, yeah, the rocks, the rocks are right, Matthew did not handpick those, now Katie might be upset, but Matthew did not pick those by himself.
Thank you, any other public comment?
My name's Joseph Simis Junior, I'm a resident of West Warwick, thirty-five Lockwood Street, and a resident all my life. I think there's a problem with homeless people at the gazebo, I know you've probably heard this multiple times. Today, I was there for an hour, people had a motorcycle on, underneath the gazebo. People were laying there, shoes off, yelling at cars. It just has to stop. There's gotta be some way that you can get them out or sell the property and lease it to somebody. So that they own it, if the town can't get the people out, cause it's a town property, sell them to somebody. And make it a gazebo for the rest of its life. And destroying plants in West Warwick, they're sitting on them, putting their guitars on them, it just doesn't stop. I know this is a sore subject.
I know, Joe, you're, you're not the, one of those unsung heroes, and I know Stan's, has you. Doing a lot of these flower beds and whatever work through Arctic, so I'm sure you're a little passionate when somebody's sitting in the flower beds.
Yep.
And destroying them on you, so. I, I get it, I know there's been a few arrests there over the past couple of weeks, um.
Today, they could arrested a couple people. We were cutting the grass at Saint John's, and I stood there for an hour and watched those people today. Yelling at cars, laying on the cement, one was smoking. I just wanna use, I know you guys. A lot of people told me I'm wasting my time today, but I just figured I had enough, when they sat on the flowers, putting their guitars in the flowers, the plant is in Arctic. I mean, Stan pays a lot of money, the association, Arctic Association, I do stuff on my own, just want you guys to be aware.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. I think the chief's taking note. Any other public comment?
I wasn't planning on being here tonight, but Joe wanted me to come, so I decided to do that, um. You know, the gazebo, when we went through this whole thing, was pretty good for a while, especially in the winter. Um, there were police cars there when they took down the fence and stuff like that, and it's been pretty good for a long time, up until maybe the last sixty days. It just gets a little bit worse, they keep on pushing, pushing, pushing. Now, you give them an inch, they take a mile type of thing, and that's what it seems to be happening. I just would like to see a, a cruiser there every now and then, a little bit more than has been, maybe a little, like, much more like it was before. And I think it might make a difference, I would hope it makes a difference, but we can't, I don't wanna go back to where we were, cause it's gonna get really messy and ugly. You know, I, I was walking down from the Arctic Playhouse to come to this meeting, and I was walking around, I said, this is interesting. We have these buildings that are all being fixed, there's cars parked in the street, you know, going to stores or whatever they're doing. There's people walking in the streets, I've never seen that kinda activity in an evening, you know, things are getting better. And it's just this element that we just don't need here, it's just, it's taken away for what we're trying to do. And, you know, we invest in trying to make it nice and just, they just destroy it. And I, I think a little bit more can be done.
So. I, I know I've had this discussion with others too, now, it is a public park, and it's. Respect is one of the biggest things that needs to happen there, is respecting the property and making sure you're not defacing it or whatever, um. It's hard to tell who's homeless, who's not, um, I know there's been a gray vehicle there every day. Guy has a home, but he hangs out there. You know, there's others that hang out there that aren't homeless. But we as a council can't say who's desirable and less desirable. Um, as long as they're taking care of the property and following the laws. And that's what needs to happen, and yes, our police department has gone there numerous times, and I know. Two weeks ago, there's, I know there was four arrests in one week. I don't know, I, I didn't read the report this week, but there's, there's been patrol. Um, I know it clears out dusk to dawn, you know, it's not, people's not sleeping there, and they're not, you know. When Joe talked to me about sitting on the flowers and whatever, I, I don't disagree with them, I mean, Arctic has come a long way. In five years. And the flowers, the, the, you know, Mayor Levake, I talked to him today, he said, the island in front of town hall, when I say front. The island on the side of town hall where the police department is, he says, looks amazing, says, wow, never pictured it like that. You know, we're talking to a former mayor who was here in nineties, right, eighties, nineties.
He's in Mayor Office building now.
Right upstairs, he's, he's right there with you, you know, he gave compliment, I hear it all the time, we see it, the flowers look great, the Arctic's looking clean, the street's being swept. You gotta just keep maintaining, but again, somebody, there's no ordinance if somebody has no shirt on, you know, it's. Unless it's female, I guess, I don't know, but, you know, I can walk down the street with no shirt on. There's, there's, nobody can say anything as far as I'm, chief, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm walking down the street with no shirt on, I, trust me, I don't look good with it.
Please don't, please don't.
I'm, I'm very pasty white, yeah. Um, you know, I, I wish I could put an ordinance for legs, you know, I don't wanna see Derek's legs, you know, I put an ordinance forward for those things, right? But again, I, I, no, we're going way off, but that's my fault.
You don't say.
But we need to, we need to make sure that the people who are there are following the laws and rules, simple enforcement, and that's it.
But, you know. The same thing, and I agree with you, it's very disheartening, I drive by there at quarter to nine every morning, and I see at least three or four people who. The no shirt, the skateboard, the scooter, not meant to be on there. But again, if you have four or five people up there, doesn't, homeless doesn't come into play, it's about behavior. Four or five people up there, it's ninety degrees out, and they're sitting down on a bench, and they're talking. Who's to say one of us isn't one of them, you, you can't, it's, that's what it's meant to be, a gathering spot, but because of the history we've had. And. I mean, you, you really have to, once you're labeled, you, you're stuck. So that's labeled as, as a place for undesirable people to go and hang out. And it's, to me, serving the wrong purpose. But again, if they're sitting on the flowers, it's property destruction, they're yelling at cars, that's intimidation, but again, what's. You know, we all know it's difficult, the chief can go arrest five different people up there, they'll be out the next day doing the same thing. And the more they get arrested, the more it's an F U to, to us, basically, that's the way I would take it, is, yeah, you arrest me once, you arrest me twice, I'm still here. So even though I'm doing this and I shouldn't. You know, I mean, I'm all for the park, I'm all for the gazebo, it's not the gazebo's fault. But in the green season, when, when April comes around, and then especially May, it gets warmer and warmer, you go into September getting warmer, I don't see anything changing. And I'm not trying to be negative about it, that's just how it is. You know, you get, get the same people, they know they can't be stopped, they know that the police, they, they have the teeth, and then they use the teeth, and then it's taken away. So I don't know, I think, to, to rack all of our brains and say, what do we do in order to keep that. The desirables out and make it safe. The answer was putting a fence up to clean it, which it got cleaned and everything, but as soon as that, and I wasn't for the fence at all. Cause I don't think it's the gazebo's fault, but once that fence comes down, this is what's gonna happen.
Well, I, I do.
You know, and it's, it's, it's.
It stayed, you know, I, I realize this, the weather wasn't the best. But it just gradually, you know, it wasn't so bad, you know, it was better. And it just gradually, and we kinda let them do a little bit more, like I said before, and they, you give them an inch, they take a mile, and it just gets a little bit, a little. And we're regressing, and we were at a point in time, if we could've just held it there. And I think they had a little bit of respect, so they didn't show up for a while, they were gone. And I think they, a, a message was sent when that fence went up, a message was definitely sent, and they stayed away, and just all this creeping back in, and. Yeah, I just, I just care too much about this town, I, I'm trying so hard to do so many good things here, and to see things go. Australian people walking around, you get some businesses here, businesses here, some new businesses will be going up, um, it's, it's like. If, if, you, you have this good thing and that's happening, and we're gonna lose it because of this stuff.
I, I think, um. So to kinda hammer that point home, I think the, the best way to get rid of the bad actors, if you will, is to make it a desirable place for its intended purpose. To get people who just wanna go there for what it's meant for, you know, and. No pun intended, that'll make it police itself, if you've got fifteen people who are spending their lunch hour there, reading a book, doing what they want, they're not gonna tolerate people. Doing bad things to their place that they enjoy, so, you know, we can just keep. Banging the drum of arresting people and doing this and doing that, but we wanna make it a place that people want to go to. And that'll, in its own way, push out the people that are bad actors, I, I feel.
So, Mark, even last week, there was a lady.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
Once, once again.
Mister President, Mister President, once, once again, I, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but you, this is public comment. Public is invited to say things, but this is an interesting topic that more people would wanna be involved in, so you don't wanna be violating. The Open Meetings Act, if you wanna put it on the agenda to speak so more people can take part in the discussion rate, but right now, I mean, they're free to make. Questions or inquiries, but I mean, I would advise not really getting into a long, drawn-out dialogue about the issues.
Truth is, I wanted to hear what Chief Levine was gonna say.
You can hear what Chief Levine has to say, you just don't.
Yeah.
Could you come up, chief, again?
I mean, it is public comment. He's part, he's a member of the public.
So just a couple of points, I, I, we agree, uh, wholeheartedly that some of the activities that are going on at the gazebo. While upsetting, are not criminal by any nature whatsoever. People with no shoes on, people laying down, people with no shirt on, people dancing. Not illegal. May not like it, may not be your kind of music that they're dancing to, may not even be music that they're dancing to, but that's the reality of it. No enforcement. Couple of other things. It does me no good when somebody contacts me, whether it be at a, at a public meeting or a text message or a phone call that. Hey, a week ago last Thursday, there was a guy that was destroying something there. I appreciate that, sir, thank you, and I just hang up the phone. We need to be notified while this stuff is going on. We can't take any enforcement action if you tell me a week and a half a- after the, uh, the incident. And the third thing is to kinda go against what Stan was, was bringing up. They haven't been slowly creeping back. It was a service provider. It was providing a place for a lot of individuals who are now hanging out at the gazebo. That service provider is now not offering the services to the extent that they were. So those people were always around, but they had a place to go that was out of public view. Some of those people are now there because it's close by where the service provider was. So it's not like they just magically appeared. They've always been there, but they've had a place to go that was out of the public view. So yes, they are still there. They're not committing crimes that we know of. It might be an unattractive, um, you know, there might be some people doing unattractive things, but. When, you know, we've made five arrests in the last two weeks. We take enforcement action. They violate an ordinance. If they violate a statute. We arrest those people. End of story. But it takes some cooperation from the public, or my officer actually has to see it happening. For us to take enforcement action.
Is, so let me ask you a quick question. Uh, I wasn't gonna comment, but if somebody does do that, is, is it possible to no trespass? Somebody that has previously or, previously violated, for those that have violated laws?
If I got something written from the town of West Warwick that they wanna do that, possibly. Most of the time, if they're committing a crime on the gazebo property, part of either bail. Which is mostly gonna be personal recognizance, is going to be a no trespass order to that. Most of the time, that's what's gonna occur. We're, we're certainly gonna ask that, especially if it's a damaged property type complaint, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comment? Thank you, and, um. Happy Labor Day.
We're gonna make a motion to move back into executive session. The two chiefs, don't forget to come up here and, uh.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.